Good morning, everyone. I believe we've reached that time to begin this meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the September 7th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners to order, and would like to ask Vice Chairman Wetherspoon if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
Please stand and face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart, and veterans, you may salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You should remain standing. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you, Lord, for all the many blessings you give us each and every day. Lord, we ask that you continue to bless this board, bless the citizens of Harnett County, and bless our county as a whole. Lord, we ask you to be with those in the military, keep them safe, Lord, be with our law enforcement, our first responders, be with them as they go through their daily routines. And Lord, we just ask that you be with us today as we discuss and attempt to do the business of the people of Harnett County. May everything that we do be pleasing to you. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, at this time, we would consider any additions or deletions to the published agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'm looking for the item number. The item to do with the land swap between the town of Lillington, Harnett County, and Harnett County and
Town of Lillington.
Town of Lillington and the Board of Education.
That's item K.
Yes, sir. I recommend, or I would like to ask that item K be removed from the consent agenda and added as item nine on the regular agenda.
Do I have a motion to pull item K from the consent agenda, that being the motion to approve the proposed exchange of property between the County of Harnett, Harnett County Schools and Town of Lillington, and to place it on the agenda as a separate item in the motion to make it number nine, and we'll move the other numbers down. Would that work, Madam Clerk? Okay, so nine now becomes the property exchange, and nine will come ten and so on until adjournment. Okay, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Any other additions or deletions to the published agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion that we approve the amended agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Wetherspoon. Do I have a second?
Second, Commissioner McCoy.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. So at this time, we will consider the consent agenda, of course, minus item K, which was pulled. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Wetherspoon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will now have a period of up to 30 minutes for informal comments. Each person that would like to speak, please approach the podium. You'll have a maximum of three minutes to make your remarks. Only one public comment per person during this period. Please address your remarks on the podium and begin your remarks by stating your name and residential address. Please maintain proper decorum, make comments in a civil manner, and refrain from any personal attacks or use of obscene or profane language. Thank you. Mr. Rivas?
Jerry Rivas, Sanford, North Carolina. On August 28th, my wife of 44 years took her own life. And there's a situation in this state. In 2003, a neurologist named Dr. Renee Kotzen performed a back surgery on her at Cape Fear Memorial Hospital, and he crippled her. I mean, he ruined her. Ever since, from her navel to mid-thigh, she had absolutely no sensation except for chronic pain in her back. We went to 13 different lawyers to try to do something, and we were told nothing can be done because in North Carolina, there's one malpractice insurer, and they tell all the doctors they insure, you better not testify against another North Carolina doctor, or you'll never get covered again. They said you have to hire an out-of-state expert for $50,000 to $75,000. How much money do you folks have? And six months after the statute of limitations ran out, there was a full front-page article in the Fayetteville Observer Times about this guy. We learned his true history. He lost his license to practice medicine in the state of New York because he operated on the wrong side of a man's brain. He came to North Carolina, and he was given a license to practice medicine. He crippled so many people. After he did this to my wife, I found two other ladies in my church that he had done the same thing to. He crippled so many people that he finally lost his surgical privileges at Cape Fear, and ultimately, his license to practice medicine here. He moved on to California and was given a license to practice medicine. Now, part of this is greed on the part of the hospital. A neurologist can bring in as much as $3 million a year to a hospital, and that's all they cared about. He cut her iliac artery, which is on the front of her spinal column. What was he doing there? She lost two units of blood. Cape Fear Valley Hospital left her laying on a gurney in a hallway for nine hours before she ever got the transfusion. But he also cut something called her pedendal nerve, which controlled her genitalia. My wife and I have been married almost 44 years. We have not had marital relations since 2003 because she said, what's the point if I can't feel anything? And I couldn't come up with an argument for that. She was the kindest, sweetest person I have ever met. She never had a harsh word for anybody, and even when she was in horrible pain, she always had a smile and a kind word, and she thought of y'all. Whenever I would come up here, she always admonished me, behave yourself, don't be mean to anybody. But I ask your help through Jim Bergen, Tom Tillis, Richard Burr, whoever, whether it's a state law or a federal law, this has got to stop. If a doctor loses their license to practice medicine in one state, they should not go to another one. If anybody in this room, if you lost your driver's license for a DUI, you can't get a driver's license in another state because they share the information. And how can this be? I met her when I was 14, and she was 12, and we've been married next month would have been 44 years. And after her mother passed away three years ago, depression set in on top of everything else. And I don't, I don't know how I can go on without her, but I don't think this was a suicide. I think she was the final victim of Dr. Renee Kotzen. So again, I'm asking you all, you know, I don't know how to go about it, but then this has got to stop. And then we saw my back surgeon in 2015, and he told us, he said, I think I can help you. She was scared to death of getting another back surgery. Then he started telling stories about how he knew Dr. Kotzen and how many of Dr. Kotzen's mistakes he fixed. And I asked him, I said, did you ever report him to the State Medical Association? Well, no. I mean, why not? You know, how can this be? How can you knowingly let somebody just keep butchering people? Money for money, but at what cost? Look at me. At what cost? They held her wedding ring for evidence. Cape Fear Valley Hospital would not let me or my daughters be with her for her final moments. The last time I saw her was when they took her out of the house on a stretcher. And we couldn't even have a private viewing for my daughters and I because the coroner just disfigured her so badly. You know, all I've ever, even with all the hell I've raised up here, all I've ever asked for was a little bit of justice. Justice for all. Those are the words, justice for all. Where is the justice? Where? Dear God, we were just two broken people who found each other and helped each other. You know, if not for the love of Jesus Christ, I could do the same thing right now because I don't want to live without. I really don't. I really don't. I apologize if I run over the three minutes. Thank you, but please, please help me. Please talk to the people, you know, who we need to talk. Please help me. This can't go on. No more. No more.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. I am so sorry for your loss, and you will be in my prayers. Is there anyone else who would like to address this board this morning? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Christina Rogers. I live at 861 Johnson Road in Coates. I wanted to thank you for not moving forward with the proposed muzzle mandate for county employees and people entering county buildings a few weeks ago. Since you're likely being pressured from many sides, just as the school board was, to implement the guidelines from the CDC, I want to encourage you to continue resisting these arbitrary rules because they are an infringement on our rights and they make no medical, scientific, or common sense. I would also like to remind everyone of this photo taken last year around May or June in the midst of COVID panic, where our own governor did not take these health guidelines seriously. And he was not the only one. Remember Fauci at the ballgame, Pelosi at the hairdresser, Obama's party this year, and Pelosi's fundraiser, et cetera. If the leaders giving us these orders don't take them seriously, neither should we, the people. In 1918, during the Spanish flu that killed an estimated 50 million worldwide, a similar photo surfaced showing the leaders unmasked at a boxing match. The people refused to comply with the hypocrisy after that. In today's agenda, there is mention of funds being given to the Health Department for testing, case investigation, contact tracing, surveillance, containment, and mitigation. If you make the case rate calculations yourselves, those numbers do not warrant such invasion of the people's privacy. Moving on, I had listened to a part of a work session a couple of weeks ago, so I'm not sure where this went, but the word equity was used when brainstorming how to use the CARES Act money and that it should be used equitably. This word has been hijacked and is often used along with diversity and inclusion, which all sound good on the surface, but the underlying strategy is based on a Marxist view of classes, oppressed versus suppressors. This has also been titled critical race theory or CRT. I hope I am reading more into it than what is there, but understand that diversity, inclusion, and equity, as it is used now, does not belong anywhere in the U.S., let alone in our rural county of Harnett. My last note was about climate change. I heard in that same meeting about funds being used for reducing the effects of climate change in our county. I am no expert, so I will refer you to the one who is. Genesis 822 says, while the earth remains, seed time and harvest, and cold and heat, and summer and winter, and day and night shall not cease. And in Job 38, verses 22 to 35, God continually challenges Job about who really has the power to control weather phenomena. Bottom line is, if you were thinking of spending my tax dollars on keeping climate change from occurring, you will have better success if you feed it to a goat. At least then, the farmers around here could use it later as fertilizer. That is my two cents for now. Thank you for your time, and y'all have a wonderful morning.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Is there anyone else would like to address this body this morning? Okay, seeing no one else approaching the podium, we will call this period of public comments to end and move to item six on the agenda, which would be appointments.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint the following. Mr. Ramsey, who is currently on the Harnett County Planning Board, would like to be reappointed for another three-year term, expiring on 9/30/2024. That leaves one vacancy for District Two on this board. Mr. Walter Massey would like to be reappointed to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term, expiring 9/30/2024. There's still two alternate vacancies on this board for Districts One and Three. And Harnett County Commission for Women and Youth, Jennifer Parish O'Dell, would like to be appointed to this committee. You should have her application. And there's still two vacancies on this board. That's my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Wetherspoon. We have a motion to accept these appointments for these three committees. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Nickel. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, General Services Director requests the approval of an agreement with Global Medical Response, MedTrans, for a hanger lease at the jet port from May 4th to June 30th. Mr. Blevins, you have that?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Good morning.
It's a fairly easy lease. It took a while to get it going. MedTrans is the company that we, that are currently in there and have been in there for quite a while, but they changed their leadership with Global Medic out of Denton, Texas. So it took a little bit of time, and they had a different process for us to go through. However, working with MedTrans and our legal department, we're at the, we have a good lease, we think, and at $1,500 per month, a lease for two years, which gives us a little more time to relook, to hanger, move forward. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Did you say how long this, oh, I see. Got it. June 30th of '24. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Blevins? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve this lease agreement.
Okay, a motion to approve the lease agreement as proposed by Mr. Blevins. Thank you, Mr. Wetherspoon. Do I have a second?
Johnson, second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Blevins.
Thank you very much.
The item eight, Solid Waste Director requests the board approve a project ordinance for Northwest Convenience Center project. It would consist of constructing a new convenience center, 1979 Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge River Road, for the, to serve the citizens of Northwest part of Harnett County, I believe. Mr. Price, do you have that?
I do. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members.
Good morning.
Everybody's doing well. This is about three years ago, the county bought, gosh, it's about 30 acres of land at 1979 Oak Ridge River Road. There was a combination of things that were going to be done at this particular site. One, you've already seen the cell tower that's gone up, the radio tower communications for the Viper system that Mr. Clint Williams has been working on. Second was a park master plan that we were looking as far as putting that particular area, and then we were going to combine the convenience site, obviously with the explosive growth in Northwest Harnett that we're experiencing. Their current one, if you're aware of where that one's at, it's very dangerous. It's in a curve, and it's very, very small. Chad Bean, our Solid Waste Director, is here, and what this is, is just moving this forward to put on the CIP to get the bidding process started on that.
Thanks, Mr. Price. Any questions for Mr. Price?
This is just for the construction of the convenience center.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'm assuming it'd be fairly quick as far as timeline on the CIP?
Yeah, we have moved that up, and that's one reason we're coming forward the board now with all the growth that we're experiencing. And I know Chad is very concerned about the safety as far as where the existing one is at right now. We're also leasing that land, so we would own this and then start that process. Chad, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to start kind of in a moderate and then build upon that as far as the facility is concerned. He probably thinking of that, and I can't.
Good morning. Good morning.
Yeah, so we're going to look at doing this in a phased approach, but as Coley already said, we already have the property there, and we are wanting to complete that within this fiscal year.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Good question. What was the timeline on having this completed?
Yeah, most definitely within this fiscal year is our object or our goal. So, you know, as soon as we can get this ball rolling, we'll just be having it done within this year, this fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this project ordinance for the Northwest Convenience Center project.
Thank you, Mr. Wetherspoon. We have a motion to approve this request, to approve the project ordinance. Do I hear a second?
Seven, Commissioner McCoy.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Thank you, Mr. Bean. Appreciate you being here this morning. Next, we'll go to, I guess, the new item nine, which was K, which was pulled from the consent agenda, which is, was seeking a motion to approve the proposed property exchange between the County of Harnett, Harnett County Schools, Town of Lillington. I understand that there has been some further discussions from the Town of Lillington on the proposed exchange. Is that correct, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir, that is.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table this discussion and this project, this land swap, until such time as everything can be worked out between the parties involved, specifically objections and concerns coming from Town of Lillington.
Thank you, Mr. Wetherspoon. So we have a motion to table this matter until the items that are in some contention or disagreement can be worked out among the parties. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Second, I think Commissioner Nickel was right with you. Any discussion on that? Y'all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a request for a motion or a proposal from Stanford Holshouser to conduct the recruitment of an Economic Development Director. Mr. Wood?
Mr. Chairman, this is a follow-up to our closed session the other day. I did get in contact with Ernie Pearson, and we worked through this proposal. They can start immediately, and I trust when the time is up, they can.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Wood?
What was their fee for that?
25% of the first year's salary plus some expenses.
You don't have a figure? Excuse me?
Commissioner McCoy?
Congress, you don't have a total figure of what this will cost us?
Well, the way they do it is it's 25% of the first year's salary of benefits, so we won't know that until you negotiate with the person. But we have a ballpark figure.
Okay, so we won't know until we negotiate the person's rate of pay and then the other stuff.
That's right. That's right.
But I just like to talk plain English. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
One more thing to say.
Sure.
How can we approve that if we don't know? We don't know what we are proving as far as the cost.
Well, you're approving the, you're approving the people's proposal. We'll do the math on the back end.
And then the back, then we have to make.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I want to know. I just want to know. What we are proving as far as money, spending on money, I want to know what money we are spending in this county. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. Any further questions? Comments? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. Commissioner McCoy has made a motion to approve this request for the proposal from Stanford Holzhouser to conduct the recruitment of Economic Development Director. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Nickle. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to County Manager's Report. Mr. Wood?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to have one, this is the DSS monthly report, and then the Budget Man, Interdepartmental Budget Man.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or any commissioners on either of those reports or comments? Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any new business to come before Commissioner today?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McCoy?
I moved that the board go into closed session to discuss the county staff concerning the position to be taken by the county in negotiating a contract for acquisition of real property.
Thank you, Commissioner McCoy. We have a motion from Commissioner McCoy to move into closed session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will now move into closed session.
Now call us back in order and I believe we did have one, uh, one thing that would come back before us in open session.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that based on our conversation during closed session that we, uh, direct staff to, uh, begin the process of issuing an RFQ for engineering firms at the hundred regional jet port.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherspoon, and that would be, um, uh, at the conclusion, or at the end, at contract ending date of contract, uh, for our, um, current engineer.
All right.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Weatherspoon to, uh, direct staff to issue an RFQ for engineering firms, uh, in anticipation of the contract ending for our current firm in November. Have a second by Commissioner Nickel. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Uh, this time, is there any further business coming forward this, this body? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank Mr. Weatherspoon's second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Nickel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned.